Thank you, Father Waters. And thank you, Jerry. And now we're ready for item two, roll call, Julie.
Mayor Moberly.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kelly.
Here.
Councilor Ross.
Here.
Councilor Brown.
Councilor Moberly. Here.
Okay, now we're up to item three. It's a discussion relating to the denial of the final plat for Maple Glen III located east of existing Maple Glen Development, located approximately a half mile north of east 106th Street North and North Garnet on the east side of the road. And Mr. Ray, you're going to present this today.
I am, Mr. Mayor. As you may recall, at the meeting earlier this week, there was -- this item was on the agenda and it was not passed nor did it fail. It had to tie vote, which by legal determinations means that the item did fail. The same scenario occurred with at least one other, two other, at least one other agenda item. Within the next 24 hours, I received numerous phone calls from various people. First, the applicants called and were concerned about their project. All of these were, or this plat was a final plat, ready for lots to be sold, ready for the development to begin. The applicant indicated to me that he had watched this through the staff process, he had watched it through the TAC process, he had been there for the planning commission, and he didn't see any reason why he wouldn't be able to go ahead and begin work, and even confided to me that there had been significant dollars spent and the clock was ticking for him, and he wanted to know what his relief was. As with the hotel, I got the same kind of inquiries on that. I also had a number of you call me and ask me, what are the ramifications of this? What are the options? What can we do? And quite frankly, that required us to do quite a bit of work at the staff level. And then finally, I had a number of residents, not finally, next, I had a number of residents call me about this same issue. What happened? What can we do? How can we ensure that people that want to invest in Owasso can do so with the belief that they are going to be judged by the merits of their development rather than some other criteria that's placed on them? And I couldn't answer that. And then finally, as you know, we have been working for six months now, maybe seven months now, on a major economic development prospect for the city of Owasso. We've invested $50,000, $60,000 in that project, and I'm getting ready to ask for some additional funds. And finally, I was contacted by the people that we have been working with last night and again this morning with the question, is Owasso's government stable enough for us to look at making a $70 million investment in your community? And those are the concerns that were brought to me. As you recall, Mr. Mayor, you and I talked on Wednesday morning about some of those concerns, not all of them, I hadn't had them all yet. And we ended up with you calling this special meeting. The meeting is for the purpose of you being able to have a discussion. There are no action items listed today. As our city attorney will tell you in a moment, we can't do that. We have a prohibition against hearing items, rehearing items, or against making decisions on items once they've been determined. So the purpose of the meeting is for us to have a somewhat more informal discussion with you than a regular council meeting would be, to let you know what the background is of the way these things occur, what the legal issues are, what unfortunately, what may be our exposure is to the actions that have occurred, and give you an opportunity to begin the process of thinking through this with the correct information, not the passionate things you see on the Internet or the stuff. Sometimes I have a better word for it, but in deference to the audience, I saw Lynn Newton out there, and she wouldn't want me to use a -- oh, that bothered you, didn't it, Lynn? I'm sorry. Lynn wouldn't want me to use the kind of word I thought about, too. The stuff that goes on on the Internet, I thought it might be good, I thought it might be good for me to present to you today some of that background. So here's the way that our presentation is going to go. I am going to call Bronz Stevenson first to the podium, and Bronz is going to kind of go over the development process with two purposes. It's to let you refresh your memory about how these things occur, and secondly, to be here if you want to ask him questions relating to that process or relating to who influences that process. That may be a very legitimate question when looking at processes. Who can influence these processes and who did influence these processes? Was there any lack of integrity in the process that went on with these cases? After Mr. Stevenson is finished and after you ask any questions that you may have of him, I'm going to ask Ms. Lombardi to come to the podium or at her seat, makes no difference, and give you the, some legal discussions, some legal information. What does our ordinance require? What does our ordinances prohibit? And then thirdly, what kind of exposure do we have? And what does she, what does she think we need to do in order to be sure we're in compliance with our ordinances and in order to ensure that we are actually serving the public in the manner we're supposed to, which is to govern, govern in a manner that is indiscriminate, not discriminatory in any way, and make sure the same process is carried out for every single person. And then, once you have those questions answered, as we always do, we've given people a chance to sign up if they want to speak to you again. I don't think this should be just a staff thing. Perhaps there are people who want to be here and who want to make a presentation to you. The staff, I promise you, is looking at this from a, from a, an absolute operational point of view. What do we require? How do we make those requirements? How do we ensure those requirements are met? And then what is the process we do that? I want you to know that we're very proud of the integrity in our community development process, and we're very proud of the fact that throughout the region, Owasso has long been known as, we don't, as a business-friendly development operation over at City Hall. We don't promote things like one-stop shopping centers. We've been doing it for over 25 years, where someone can come to our place with business and get their business done. So it's real important to us that that system that we have, that we value so highly its integrity, that it remain in place. So we're open to any questions you may have about anything that may be a part of this. So, Mr. Mayor, with your permission, I'm going to begin by asking our community development director, Mr. Bronz Stevenson, to come forward and visit with you about the process that he uses and that we use for development.
Mr. Bronz.
Thank you, Uncle Mayor, members of the council. We're going to have a brief overview of the Owasso development process. We're going to basically start from the beginning if somebody is coming through and wants to develop a piece of land. I make reference throughout this presentation and throughout our design standards and process, there's reference to the technical advisory committee. And I wanted to give you a list of the members who are on that technical advisory committee. It's often referred to as TAC, but it includes members from the different utility companies, from county representatives, if there's an impact in a certain county, member of the Owasso Planning Commission, the applicant, the applicant's representatives, and members of the city of Owasso staff from the Community Development Department, Public Works Department, Economic Development Department, Fire Department, and Police Department.
Bronz, could you move your mic up just a little bit?
Yes, sir.
Have our time here, are you sorry?
Step one in the process would be the annexation. If a piece of property is outside of Owasso's city limits, this is the process of bringing it inside the city limits. The process starts with a staff discussion, staff review, it goes again in front of the technical advisory committee, it goes in front of the annexation committee, where the merits of the project are discussed. Can it be adequately served with utilities? Can we provide adequate police and fire protection? The technical advisory committee, the annexation committee, both make a recommendation, it then goes to the planning commission. The planning commission again reviews the process, the project, and then makes a recommendation to the city council, who will make a decision on whether or not to annex a piece of property into the Owasso city limits. After that time, the next step in the process is the rezoning. Again, this is staff review is the initial step, meeting with the applicant, it then goes to the technical advisory committee for review, then it goes to the planning commission review, the last step is the city council. The purpose of the rezoning process is to make sure that the piece of property that has been brought in is being zoned for the appropriate use. We look at the uses that could be allowed, say it was commercial, is it the appropriate location for commercial activity? What could be the potential impacts of a rezoning? All those things are taken into consideration by the technical advisory committee, by staff, by the planning commission, put into the recommendation that goes to the city council, who is the body that would review the rezoning process. The next process is plating, and there are typically two stages to plating. The first is a preliminary plat, which is required for any development that proposes to divide land into two or more tracts of land or lots. Preliminary plaits illustrate the development concept of the property and are often modified after meeting with staff and TAC to address any concerns that there may be. After the preliminary plat has been reviewed by city staff and various utility companies and the technical advisory committee, construction plans for the development's infrastructure are submitted. These plans include the specifications and drawings for stormwater drainage, streets and grading, and erosion control, water lines, stormwater detention, and wastewater lines. Physical development of the property typically begins after the approval by the preliminary plat, knowing that the city staff, the technical advisory committee, and the planning commission have approved the lot dimensions, easement locations, stormwater conveyance systems, street layout. Development of the property can occur once the civil plans provided by the applicant are reviewed by the Owasso Public Works Engineering Department and a permit is obtained by the developer. Again, with a preliminary plat, we go through a staff review, technical advisory committee, and then to the planning commission. The planning commission is the body that approves the preliminary plat. The next stage in the phase would be the final plat. A final plat illustrates the layout of dimensions of lots, rights of void widths, easements, and other physical characteristics that have been previously approved by the preliminary plat. After obtaining approval from the technical advisory committee and planning commission, the final plat is considered by the city council. The final plat makes the dedications and conveyances to the city and other entities. A residential plat allows the individual lots to be sold. All issues related to land use or engineering have been addressed prior to this stage. And the next step would be the site plan review. The site plan review is only applicable in a, in a commercial type of development. With a residential type of development, after the final plat is approved, it goes right to the building permit stage, where there's additional review of the individual buildings, making sure they meet code and all requirements. Site plans for commercial properties are where we really look at the siding of the building, landscape, lighting, parking, traffic flow, access, that type of thing. And that's, that is done internally, again, goes in front of the technical advisory committee and has a great deal of staff input prior to any building permit being issued on the property. Next, if we can go into Maple Glen III. In reference to the final plat for Maple Glen III, this project does represent over a year of working with the applicant to ensure that all city requirements have been met. The site work has already been commenced in accordance with the approved preliminary plat, and the civil engineering plans dealing with grading, drainage, stormwater pollution prevention, utilities, and transportation. This is the third of four phases of what has been a very successful single-family development that until council meeting on Tuesday night had, had no major issues associated with this or any other phase of the project. There's already been significant investment of time and money from the developer to get to this stage, and without a final plat, lots cannot be sold. All requirements have been met, and there have been no planning, development, or engineering related reasons given by staff, the technical advisory committee, or the planning commission that this project should not be approved. From a professional and technical standpoint, no reason has been given as to why these plaits were not approved. The review process is one that was designed by staff and the city council to provide strict development standards and integrity with the result of a quality project that benefits the city of Owasso and the citizens of Owasso. Every step in that process has been followed, and there has been no deviation from the standards for development that the city council has set forth. And I'd be happy to take any questions you may have at this time.
And, Mr. Mayor, what our, what our plan is at this point is a little bit of a departure from normal, but I think it would be better if we let the council ask questions of Mr. Stevenson and then Julie can come on if that's, if that's, if that's your desire.
Yeah, that would be fine, and I could start it off because primarily, obviously, I wasn't here on Tuesday night, so a lot of this I'm getting for the first time outside of what you brought up to us or what we talked about in work session. And yes, from, in reviewing all of that, it seemed as though things were normal, it was a normal development, and saw that it had the merits to, to pass, to be approved. Nonetheless, any discussion over the phases that you talked about from anyone on this, on this particular development?
As far as from, if there were any issues with the project?
Right.
No, sir.
None.
There have been no major issues associated with Phase One and Two, which have been built. Phase Four is actually already gone through the preliminary plating process. That was approved by the Owasso City Council that they're meeting this, or I'm sorry, Owasso Planning Commission, that they're meeting this month, and there have been no major issues associated with this project.
Okay. Again, I wasn't here on Tuesday, so why wasn't it passed?
Sir, I don't believe I have an answer for that.
Okay. Okay, that's what I need to know. Any other questions from the council?
Well, I'm just curious, just being on the council since May and coming to city council meetings prior to that, I don't know that I've ever seen a plat go through this process and not get passed. Is there a history of this happening in the past?
No, sir. If a plat, typically if a plat is not approved, there is, there is a planning-related reason, there's an engineering and access-related reason, a utility easement-related reason that's given to the applicant why the plat cannot be approved. In my experience, a, if a plat were to be approved, every time I've seen one that's not approved, a reason has been given to the applicant as to why it cannot be approved. That way they have the opportunity to address that. I have, in my experience, I haven't seen a plat that was, that was not approved and not given a reason to not be approved.
Thank you.
Were you contacted by any of the councillors with questions on this final plat?
No councillor, I was not.
Okay. Any other questions? Patrick, anyone?
Well, if there aren't, Mr. Mayor, I think I'd like to call on Ms. Lombardi now to kind of give you a briefing on where she sees us in terms of legal issues relating to this, why we got to this point, and where we may go down the road.
Mr. Mayor, let me begin with talking about the current situation, a rather unique situation that we find ourselves in, and what options are and are not currently available to the council as a result or arising out of the city of Owasso's own code of ordinances. Beginning with an understanding that the city of Owasso code of ordinances prohibits an item coming back before the council when it has previously been decided by the council or the council has taken action on that item, it cannot come back before the council for six months. While this is extremely rare or unusual in a plat situation, if in fact there is a denial of a plat, one of two things typically occurs. Either the applicant may choose to take no action and simply hope for a different result six months down the road before the council. That, as you might imagine, is extremely rare. What would be more common, even in this uncommon situation, would be for the applicant to take the reasons that were given for the denial, which were based on planning, engineering, substantive reasons and items, and try to correct those. Sometimes this might, or oftentimes, this would result in very, very significant changes in that plat over that six-month period before it came back to the council. The applicant would use that six-month period of time to cure the problems based on what the council has given as the reason for denial. This is an extremely unique situation because you don't have a denial of this plat, at least as is my understanding, and certainly as the record reflects from the meeting last Tuesday night, for any planning, design, or engineering reasons. There is in effect nothing for the applicant to go out and correct and bring this plat back to the council. So we find ourselves unable to, the council finds itself unable to consider this item again for six months. However, in this case, there is an exception, but within the ordinance there is an exception that provides that annually, when a new council is seated, and that occurs each year, whether the composition of the council has changed in the election that year or not, a new, a new council is seated the first week of May of every year. Our ordinance provides that a, after a council has been seated, if it was previously considered by previous council, then it may be considered by that council. If that's not clear, let me just sum up by saying that some effect of that is that this item could come back before this council when it's reseated, re-s sworn in, the first week of May. But certainly, at least in my legal opinion, and I find no other exceptions, that would be the earliest that this item could come back for consideration before the council. That pretty much sums up where we find ourselves and what the options are. Reasons for the council to consider rehearing this in May, or certainly things that I, I feel like I would be remiss if I didn't caution the council, both as a, as a body, as the governing body of this city, and certainly in their individual capacities as well, would be the potential exposure that we currently face. When a plat is denied for reasons of design, engineering, or planning, reasons that are valid and are sound, that is one thing. However, when it's denied for other reasons that are not based on planning, design, engineering, or for a valid articulable reason, and I might add, that's a reason that needs to be stated at the meeting. It's a reason that to have some validity and backing should have been raised previously. From an evidentiary standpoint, there needs to be a history of this, this issue, of this item, and have an applicant that simply has been unable or refused to correct it. When that does not happen, there is potential liability, both for the city council, the city, and for the individual councillors who may choose to, to vote to deny that plat. There are a variety of legal issues that can be raised. I'll tell you very quickly in summary, two of them. One of them may simply be, as strange as this may sound, under condemnation law, that it's a taking of property. Basically, when the governing body of a city denies a property owner, a right to use the property in a way that they choose that is in compliance with zoning and in a lawful manner, there is a taking of that, that owner's property. They are restrained from using their property just as much as if the city went out and took the property and didn't allow them to come onto it. Probably the bigger concern, though, arises under federal law, under something that we call a 1983 action, which I know the council's familiar with, we've talked about these, these are not uncommon to the city. Basically, that's based on a civil rights violation. In this case, my concern would be something of a substantive due process violation. This not only subjects the city to potential liability, it subjects the council, and probably at the top of my concern, I want to be very clear, I think I'd be remiss if I didn't, if I didn't really emphasize, that without a valid and good reason, voting to deny a plat in an arbitrary and capricious manner, and that is the exact language that the federal courts use time and time again, subjects a councillor potentially to personal liability in their, in their, in their own personal capacity. What that means is that they are liable for any judgment and they're liable for their own legal defense. That is something that I, I work avidly to try to educate and to, to make sure that we don't have happen. I don't want that to happen to any member of our city staff, let alone to our city councillors. But I feel it would be, I would be wrong not to at least say that. I think that's a very serious consideration. Yes, I've been contacted by legal counsel, there have been discussions. I have a feeling that probably I, that's the beginning of several conversations by attorneys that will be contacting me. I'll be happy to answer any questions. I could go into greater length about that, but I'd be happy to answer any questions the council might have about the issues that I've covered.
Okay. Thank you, Julie. Any questions for, I've got a couple. In regards to what you mentioned, the liability, now, the council as a whole liable as well as far as, and the city, in your mind?
There are two, let me make a distinction here. The council can be sued in their, their capacity as city councillors, as a, as a body, as the governing body of the city. Basically, that's just another way to say the city's liability, because what action is taken is taken on behalf of the city. That is something that certainly if the city or the council as a whole is named in a lawsuit, certainly that, you know, we see that in various regards, not against the council, but in city government from time to time. We provide a defense for that and are often very successful and have good outcomes. My, the concern I'm emphasizing, though, is there is a situation where a councillor may, personally, and they may be individually liable, not entitled to the benefit of either the city providing a legal defense, which of course, you know, goes without saying, can be extremely costly, or any judgment rendered against that councillor.
Does the applicant, you mentioned the loophole, or whatever you want to call it, as far as possibly seeing this coming up in May, it would be up to the applicant to, for that to be heard, is that correct?
Yes, Mayor, it would. It would be up to the applicant to, I mean, that's, it's an exception that's clearly delineated within the code of ordinances and is quite valid. But yes, it would be up to the applicant to bring that, that matter back and ask that it be placed on the agenda.
If I could just interject there, sir. Mr. Mayor, I've been contacted by two of the applicants who have already petitioned me to place this back on an agenda, and unfortunately, after consulting with council, I've had to deny that at this point. We don't have a, we don't have the option right now bringing that back before the city council until six months is passed or the new council is seated. So two of the applicants have already made contact with me.
So is that up to the council to be able to decide if we're going to try to trigger that, that loophole as far as trying to see it in May?
No, sir. If, that's not a loophole as much as it is the provision of the ordinance.
Right.
So they could petition us to put this back on the first council agenda in May, and it would automatically, because of that request, go back on, go back on the agenda as far as I'm concerned. Don't you agree?
I absolutely agree. The only issue the council would be faced with would be once again hearing the item and deciding whether to grant or deny the plat.
And, and that cannot be done until after the new council is seated.
Okay. So after the new council is seated, so in other words, you can't put it on the agenda? It would have for that first meeting in May?
No.
I think we could, because that typically, the council takes, the new council takes its seat at the beginning of that meeting in May. So yes, it could be placed on the agenda to be heard by the new council that's seated in May.
Okay. Give me some idea of what the, maybe this is a Mr. Ray question, but what are the, what are the effects now on the, on the applicant now that we've denied this? I mean, obviously, they can't, what are they losing?
Well, that may be better for the applicant to speak to, and perhaps, Julie, has the applicant signed up to speak today?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I might defer to that.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I think it, you know, I could tell you six weeks or eight weeks of lost time, lost sales, but I think the applicant may be best qualified to speak.
Understood. We can do that. All right. Any other questions?
I have one other question. What if the councillors were to reconsider and rescind their vote? What would happen pursuant to that? Or is there even a provision with which they could do that?
There really, there's not only not a provision for that councillor, but unfortunately, or fortunately, I guess it depends on how you view it, we have within our code of ordinances, though, a specific provision for motions to reconsider. For a motion to reconsider... For a motion to reconsider on this item, it must have been made at the time it was denied, so last Tuesday night, and it must have been, a motion must have been made, seconded, and passed by a majority vote. When that doesn't happen, then there cannot be a motion to reconsider to bring it back before the six-month period expires.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. So with that, then I guess we're done with this part of the presentation.
Sir, people have signed up to speak on these issues one at a time, so our presentation is through. So it's up to you now, how you want to proceed.
And in reference to the question I asked earlier, I think it would be appropriate to call the applicant up and have him speak on this particular issue of item three.
Mr. Mayor, I hadn't planned to, but given the nature of the discussion amongst the council, I'd be happy to make a few comments, if you would welcome.
Please.
My name is David Charney. I am the, one of the principals, three principals of the landowning group here, Maple Glen Three, together with my partners Pete Curtis and Greg Simmons. We are the owners of the Maple Glen land that is the subject of the plat that was before the city council. I might back up for just a brief moment. I think many in the room may know of our company's involvement in the Owasso area, and some may not. My family moved here in the mid-fifties. My mother and father chose Owasso as a place to make their home. Very thankful that they did. They're still residents here to this day. I'm actually glad that they're not at this meeting, but they have a great love of the city of Owasso, as do I. Born and raised here, went to high school here, invested significant amounts of my adult life and my family's resources here. I love this city, always have and always will. So I'm greatly disappointed here for a couple of reasons. The first and foremost, doesn't have to do with the denial of this plat, to be real honest with you. I think the city of Owasso is going to be just fine in the long term. I truly do. I think that this is a blip on the radar screen. We had a couple of very, very unfortunate decisions made by a couple of councilors, and maybe whenever they had the chance to, a calm reflection of what they've done, to both ask for our forgiveness and move forward and hopefully reverse their decisions. I think that that could happen. I do, however, I do, however, think that the seriousness of this deserves some approach, some response from us, but I want the world to know. I want those looking in, in the media, to know Owasso's going to be just fine. We truly are. With regard to this particular issue, however, I think it's important to note that there was, this wasn't an issue whereby certain folks who may have supported these two councilors because of maybe a political philosophy, maybe a philosophy that I don't agree with, maybe one that says we want, you know, no new taxes, no new government spending, very small government, no public-private partnerships. I get that. If someone says that's my political philosophy, I understand that. I don't necessarily agree with it, but I understand their political approach, and I understand that there may be folks that would vote for them who embrace that political approach. This wasn't that at all. What this was, was an effort to say, Rodney, we're going to show you that we can do something that has no basis in fact, just to bug you. I don't think that they necessarily have a bone to pick with me, but they did something so unwise, so wrong, so legally wrong, that I think it's blown up in their face, and I bet both of them wish they hadn't done it. But as far as your specific question, sir, what was the impact upon us in this wrongful vote? I can state that two families had planned, based upon the approval process that had been honored from time immemorial, the plat approval process, had committed to building new homes in this subdivision. For example, one of them was looking at another subdivision, two other subdivisions, neither one of them in Owasso. One cancellation has come in, and the second one is coming in because they say, my gosh, what is happening here? We thought that the timeline could get this accomplished, so that we could get kids in before school started. Now is it going to be six months? What's it going to be? How are we going to do this? And again, the real wrong here, sure, there was a wrong against our company, but there was a wrong against citizens that wanted to invest here, people that wanted to move here, people that wanted to spend money here, people who wanted to send their sales tax dollars to Owasso that now aren't going. That's what bothers me more than anything. We will overcome this. As far as our particular wrong, there is a huge delay that has been caused by this desire to try and make some sort of point that I still don't understand, and that huge delay has cost us significantly in dollars. One could probably add up the total investment, which is very significant, put some discount factor to it, some interest rate factor to it, and see what the delay causes. We are compelled to come forward and seek redress from that. It's a huge dollar amount, and I think when the individuals who committed the wrong see that, and they see potential personal exposure because of it, and to see that the process has never resulted in this, in the history, in the fifty-some years that my family's been here have never seen this, I think that they'll be concerned, very concerned. And so the last thing in the world that any of the three of us owners would want to do would be do something that would harm the city council, but we have a very strong grievance against the individuals that did something wrong, very wrong, and we're going to seek to redress that. But the true impact to us is there is a subdivision that has been ready to roll, ready to go, that has been through twenty reviews, reviews so far outside of the city manager's purview. It's silly for them to have had any tie between any issues Rodney may have and the approval of this plat. There are so many levels of review that are necessary, so many of them beyond my technical expertise, engineering, stormwater, calculus, ingress and egress, by bonded licensed engineers representing the city, representing the private sector. This thing has been engineered and perfected to the point that there are no objections, none, and that's the part that really bothers me. But as far as the direct answer to your precisely direct question, the exact impact upon us is financial in nature, and it is also significant to the city of Owasso. There's a parade of homes held every June. A big deal for our city to welcome new families from all around to come and explore our beautiful city, and this will not be open for business because of that. Big deal, big deal, that everyone in here owns a business. For why? Because there's some dispute with Rodney? Did anyone pick up the phone to call me and say, David, is there anything here that we should know? If you had, sir, I would have answered, I would have talked with you forthrightly, honestly, shared anything with you. I'd like to think that fifty years here, doesn't buy me any preference, doesn't buy me any goodwill, it shouldn't, but it should buy me the courtesy of a phone call. With that, Mr. Mayor, I want you to know that our request is going to be to get it back on the agenda as soon as possible. We will be here, sir, and asking that if the first possible legal date would be the first week of May, you'll see us here in the first week of May. And that will be our, that's a six, seven-week delay, I think.
Yes, sir.
There'll be many negative impacts as a result of that delay, but if that's the first that we can, that then we'll be here again. And I want to thank you for cutting short whatever you had planned this week, a special week for many families, with spring break here and Easter this weekend, but thanks for coming back and conducting a special meeting to allow many of us here to hold our grievances.
Yes, sir.
In closing, I might say once again, I understand that there are voters within Owasso who have different political philosophies than certain other voters. That's going to occur. I recognize that, and I, although I respectfully disagree with some of those philosophies, you're welcome to them, but don't let those philosophies come in and destroy the sanctity of a process, a process that has been in place for years and years and years, and that has no room for political maneuvering within it. It's an apolitical process, the platting process. It's a perfunctory administrative process to go through and make certain that certain issues were addressed. There's no right or wrong in it. There's no room for political disagreement in it. It's a follow steps A through Z, and plats are approved. And with that, I think I'll be quiet, sit down, and move forward, but.
One thing.
Yes, sir.
Bronz, would you come back to the stage? I think the one factor that we need to make sure the council does understand was whether or not this plat got to the city council magically overnight without being planned. Did it just appear in front of the city council? And Bronz, I don't think you spoke directly to that, but I think the question should be answered. The question has been posed that all of a sudden overnight, this thing magically came to the city council. Is there a timeline that would be different on this plat than any other plat that you've ever done?
No, sir. This plat, the first two phases of Maple Glen, this phase and phase four, will follow the same track. It will follow the same timeline that this or any other development in the city of Owasso would follow. No preference was given, nothing was deviated from, this followed the exact process as outlined in city code and approved by the city council.
Has the annexation committee, did they review this? Was there a point where they had to review to annex that portion of the land, right?
Yes, sir.
You don't recall when that was, do you?
I do not recall the one that had to deal with Maple Glen Three, but the next phase, Maple Glen Four, that was recently seen by the annexation committee, technical advisory committee, planning commission, and the city council, and it was the exact same process for each of the phases of this development.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Bronz. Anything else? Mr. Ray?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay. I think at this point now, we'll, I guess there's been some folks that signed up to speak on this particular item?
Yes.
Julie?
George Schaus is recognized for three minutes to speak on this item.
Okay. And I want to point out, folks, if you would, I appreciate the emotion that's going on with the situation here, but if we can, let's try to keep it in order and let everybody speak, and we have three minutes here that you'll get to speak, Mr. Schaus.
Honorable Mayor, thank you, and I wrote it down so I wouldn't forget what I wanted to say. Start off with a quote from Theodore Roosevelt. "The best executive is the one who has the sense enough to pick good men to do what needs to be done, and self-restraint enough to keep from meddling with them while they do it." In September of last year, Mr. Ray was up for contract renewal as our city manager. The vote for renewal was four to one by the sitting city council affirming his leadership of our great city. I do not believe all of the current councilors understand the vision of government that is laid out in our city charter. It is not the role of the city council to micromanage the day-to-day operations of the city. They are elected by the citizens to provide direction of the growth and development of the city by hiring a solid chief executive to facilitate their combined vision for the city. It is also incumbent upon city councilors to provide the city manager with the support and tools to implement this shared vision. It is not the role of councilors to act in any manner that would be seen as politically motivated, which is why we have had a very long tradition of not including party affiliation while seeking election to this council. They are elected to vote on all matters based on the merits, and the merits alone of any agenda item brought forth in front of them. Excuse me, I get a little nervous. Councilors are encouraged to ask questions and to expect answers to all questions before voting on an item. The charter even goes so far as to provide a forum for these questions. It is known as a work session, and it precedes the official meeting of the city council. The actions I saw taken Tuesday night trouble me as a resident of over thirty years and as a manager of one of Owasso's oldest businesses. The willingness to place personal and political feelings in the way of growth and development was shameful. I do not know all the details that led to the votes that were cast that night, and nor do I want to. I just wish that instead of grandstanding and attempting to take advantage of another counselor being absent, that councilors Ross and Brown would have asked that the agenda items be tabled for further discussion if they had any questions about anything that directly related to those items. That is, of course, why the city council has a work session. Thank you for your time.
Julie, has anyone else signed to speak on this item?
Yes, David Barnes, who has three minutes.
I'm a layup, city councilman. Appreciate the opportunity to speak. I've kind of done a three-phase speech program on this thing because basically, there's some relationship between all three of them, so there is some overlap, and unfortunately, I'm sure we'll have some overlap between what I say and what some of the other speakers said and beyond, but.
Were you going to speak on the other items as well, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Can you keep them three minutes on each one and come back on each one?
Yes, sir. And I will forego that to you as to whether you want me to just come back three different times and do it, or whether you want me to just finish those and forego the rest of my time. I can do it either way.
So that we can keep the proceedings separate, let's do each one separately, if we could, please.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And we probably should reset the.
Yes, if we could, reset the counter for David.
I wanted to reiterate that the platting process is an administrative process. It is not a political process. I'm on the planning commission, I'm on the technical advisory committee. This is what we use. This is everything in here about what happens in Owasso with platting procedures. It is a checklist that we have to specifically go through, and then it has each chapter to further identify all the items. The process is relatively long and relatively expensive for an applicant. They start off, generally speaking, when they first decide to do something with a pre-construction meeting, and a lot of times that will entail members of the community of development, and they may call in other departments if they're needed. Once that's done, then somebody can submit a preliminary plat. That plat is looked at by the city staff again, community development, everything, and then is reviewed by TAC, and as Bronz mentioned, that includes all the utilities, five members of, or five department representatives of five city departments, and a representative from the planning commission. Then it goes to the planning commission for approval, and they look at it. Once all those inputs and any items that anybody sees wrong are identified, the individual applicant goes back and makes those adjustments and cleans up for the final plat. That final plat goes through exactly the same process. It has to go in front of the technical advisory committee, back in front of the planning commission, and then finally to you. So the result is, by the end of, by the time it comes to you for a vote, it has gone through five city departments twice, it's gone through all the utility companies twice, it's gone through TAC twice, it's gone through the planning commission twice, and it's had three opportunities in public meetings for any individual or any citizen to have their involvement. So I just wanted to go through that in a simpler manner and say that there is no room for anybody to have any type of influence on it. It is a cut-and-dry checklist process. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm shocked, to say the least, to what happened. You know, Maple Glen being the third phase, I would like to have thought by the time it came to the final plat, that just as the person before me was saying, while the oversight should be there by the city council, no doubt about it, but at the same time, it has gone through city staff that you guys are supposed to trust. You know, y'all are supposed to expect them to do their jobs. That's what we pay them for. You know, all the engineers and everything like that, that's what they do. You know, Council Mopely, she's an insurance agent. You know, Council Kelly, you're Ben Eric. That's what you all do. You know, I'm going to trust you on that. You guys were put there with the trust of the citizens, each and every one of you, and I voted for each and every one of you up there on council, by the way, each and every one of you. And trust your staff. That's what they're there for. And this was a situation where straight up, no doubt about it, staff wasn't trusted, not just the city manager, every city engineer, every outside firm, none of them were trusted, and there was no reason for this to happen at all. You know, if anything, Council Kelly's over in the. You know, if anything, Council Kelly's owed an apology, as far as I'm concerned, by the other two, Council Brown and Council Ross. You know, no doubt about it, that should have been passed. So that's all I have to say, and I hope we can get over this. I hope we will. We should, that is why I moved to Owasso. Trust your staff.
Thank you, sir.
Honorable mayor, councillors, I'll probably repeat some of the things that a couple of folks have already said. I had a little something prepared, so. My name's Sean Reese. I've worked for Simmons Homes, but I want to be very clear, I'm not here speaking on Simmons' behalf. I'm here on my own behalf, but because I work for Simmons, I do new home sales in Maple Glen neighborhood specifically. So that gives me a unique perspective on the vote on Tuesday night. Simmons Homes has presold ten homes for Phase Three in Maple Glen so far this year. And the vote is basically going to potentially cancel all ten of those agreements. Those are ten families, all ten of them are relocating to Owasso from outside of Owasso. I don't see them picking another neighborhood in Owasso because they were pushed out because of this. They're going to go to another community, which means that they're going to end up spending their sales tax dollars or their hard-earned money generating sales tax dollars for another community. So basically, the vote that was taken on Tuesday night, because politics was chosen over families and Owasso taxpayers, that affected those ten families. Now, I put together some numbers. The average sales price in Maple Glen III is approximately $145,000. Again, that's an average price. And so, to make the math easy, assuming ten homes, the approximate property tax rate for Owasso schools Tulsa County is 1.12%. That is approximately $16,240 per home in property tax or adware of taxes, which we know are slated for the school system. So that's $162,400 in adware and property taxes slated for the Owasso school systems for the students alone this year from those ten families that will probably disappear. Now, I also want to talk about that over thirty years, that would add up to just under $5 million over thirty years for just those ten families. Now, consider that there's forty-three home sites in Maple Glen Phase Three. That means that of those forty-three home sites, just to skip to the numbers, $698,320 in adware of taxes are going to be absent in 2013 if we have to wait six months, because the bill process takes four to six months to complete. If we're waiting six months to start, we will not have any homes completed in Phase Three until 2014. So because you chose politics over students and Owasso taxpayers, that's happening. Another thing to consider is the impact it's actually going to have on the construction vendors. I don't have any way to put those numbers together, but there's workers that are going to be out of work now.
Three minutes is up.
Let's wrap it up, Sean. Are you done?
Yeah. Troy, how's it going?
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, Mr. Ray, this is a small morning. Thank you for taking the time to hear our comments today. I'm going to just continue a little bit about what Sean was just talking about, and that is, this has a direct and noticeable impact on our community. It amounts to nothing more than a political stunt, and that is something that is very troubling. When you look at all the facts surrounding the planning process, which we've already discussed, and when you look at the merits of the items that were on the agenda, all three of these were no brainer. They should have been passed. And now what we've got is a delay in new home construction so that someone can make a political point. That's going to cost us families moving to Owasso, as Sean already said. It's going to cost us potential future development. And it was all to make a point that has no bearing on actual city business. And Councilor Ross even said in his interview with Channel Eight, he didn't even bother to pick up the phone and personally talk to Mr. Ray about the issue. So they're dragging the entire city, all of its residents and all of its citizens along this political witch hunt. And that is all it amounts to. Every single one of these developers deserves a personal apology. Every single one of them. And I've got more to say on the other issues. We'll talk about those.
Okay. Thank you, Troy.
Look, Flavon, that's me. I've lived in this city for sixty-eight years, and never in my life have I seen anything happen, if I did it, I read the paper today. We're not going to be the envy of other cities. And I don't understand why three of you could decide with Rodney Ray that you don't want Patrick or Mr. Brown. They are the only two that is really helping citizens, and the citizens are the ones that go there. I'm scared of them. And I know I just have three minutes, but David got through a fifteen. David, John, and so I'll hurry the best I can. But I don't understand, it doesn't seem fair, that three people and a councillor could vote or be against people that the citizens of Owasso voted in. Can someone tell me?
Who are you asking, Phyllis?
I'm asking.
Any of us?
Well, you, for instance.
For me, okay.
Anyone that is going to be against Brown and Patrick.
Ma'am, we're not against.
You need to check into it.
Okay.
And I appreciate the time.
Thank you, Phyllis.
Got to get my glasses on, sorry, mayor.
All right, that's fine. Running out of time.
Okay. Start. Honorable mayor, and members of the council, I am the area president of the Owasso Chamber of Commerce. The Owasso Chamber is the city's leading business organization, representing over four-hundred-and-thirty members, from large corporations to small businesses, from centers of common education to higher education, hospitals, medical centers, financial institutions, the list goes on and on. The Chamber's major responsibility is to service a guardian of the local economy. Our purpose is to support and nurture an environment where corporate and personal investment may be maximized, where home values appreciate, and the quality of life for our citizens is enhanced. It is a responsibility we have to those already here and a promise to our future investors. To successfully attain these goals, there are four key components that must exist and complement one another. They are: an outstanding, multifaceted educational system; an aggressive economic development program; a progressive Chamber of Commerce; and, most importantly, a professional and business-friendly city government that is visionary and proactive for all its citizens. In our government structure, the city manager reports to five-member elected city council. Each councillor must understand that their role is not to obstruct growth, but to embrace it, to address each agenda item solely on its own merit, free from personal animosity and unfounded conjecture, and understand that poor judgments negatively impact the financial well-being of current investors and may very well diminish future investments. During the city council meeting on March nineteenth, three separate no votes were cast by Councillor Brown and Ross on agenda items seeking final plat approval. The plants were for a hotel, a veterinarian clinic, and a new phase of residential development, combined investments totaling in the millions of dollars. Their votes did not make good business sense. Such reckless votes greatly concern me because of the message that is immediately communicated locally, regionally, and nationally, that Owasso is not business-friendly. Well, folks, we have a historic reputation of being business-friendly. We are a premier city in Oklahoma, and we have experienced tremendous growth over the past twenty-five years. We must work to preserve this reputation, but it begins at city hall. The Chamber's responsibility is to protect current investors, encourage future investment, and to advocate for quality growth. This cannot occur without quality leadership from our city councillors. Respectfully, any councillor who cannot render a fair vote on each and every agenda item placed before them should resign. It would be in the best interest of Owasso. Thank you.
I appreciate the opportunity to be here with you today.
You know, I think my comments are maybe from a different perspective, as the other speakers have each had a different look at the issue. I had this week in my car some private sector investors from another community, and we just happened to be around the high school area at 129th and 86th Street. And they made comments on the football stadium and the modern, gloriously constructed schools that our city offers to our citizens. And they asked me, how does the city, what was the process in which these schools were built? And I said, you know, I've been asked that question many times, and I can tell you, it's from private sector investment in our community. As Mr. Ray said earlier in a few of his comments, our city has been the envy of many cities in Oklahoma, in fact, in many states, in terms of our ability to provide, not really maybe the most intelligent staff, certainly when I was here, that was the case. I wanted to be on the technical advisory committee, they wouldn't let me, because there's nothing technical about me at all. But let me tell you what my dad taught me that enabled me to start my own company and be fairly successful at it, and that is the principle of world-class customer service. That's what I can point back to. I've got written stacks of written letters from investors who have stated over and over again, the thing they enjoyed about investing in our community was our world-class customer service. We treated them like customers, we welcomed them, and we did everything we could to meet their needs. And that set us apart from other cities. I've had the really honor of working in over one-hundred-and-twenty-five cities in the last five years. That's one-hundred-and-twenty-five city managers, one-hundred-and-twenty-five city councillors. And I can tell you, when federal politics are unstable, city government politics sometimes gets skewed, but the quickest thing that can stop private sector investment is the threat of some political issue delaying that investment from coming to fruitfulness in this community. As Mr. Ray said earlier, just last evening, I was on a plane coming back from Texas, and flying down through the clouds coming into Tulsa, I got a page on my phone from an investor in Houston who said, "Have you read the paper today?" And I knew what he was referring to, and I texted him back, and he said, "What should we do?" And I said, "You should call the city manager." I'm not three minutes away. There's potentially $200 million in sales tax from businesses that are contemplating investing in our community. We cannot allow that to leave.
Thank you. I know Mr. Ray needs to leave here shortly, and I know there's one other thing he wanted to add.
No, Mr. Mayor, I just want to make sure everyone understands that the only thing that would come, this is the most important council meeting I think we've had in a number of years, and the topic is critical to how our future looks. Unfortunately, the only thing that comes between me and that is, it would be a baby or family. And you know, my wife and I are raising a brand-new baby, and for some reason, the folks that let us do that believe I'm too old to know and remember how to do that, so I have to go to class. And they've got me in class three days this week, and I'm going to have to leave. Those of you who would like to speak to me personally and say that my relationship has hurt my friends, I'll be available to do that. People who support the city continuing the way we are, I'll be glad to address that. But I hope you will allow me the privilege of leaving and let Mr. Lear come up and handle the rest of this meeting. I don't think I'm germane to the discussion beyond this point anyway. Thank you, sir.
Honorable mayor, city councillors, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm a local businessman here. I've lived, I'm a resident for fifteen years, and I currently have five employees. And God has blessed me significantly in these last several years, you know, and with that opportunity, you know, I am able to give back to my employees. You know, I'm able to give bonuses to my employees, I'm able to pay them higher salaries, and it's all because I live here and do business in this community. And I want to thank your leadership of the past for allowing me to have that opportunity. Now, you know, I'm sixty-five years old, and I'm doing better in my life now than I've ever, ever done, and I've always been successful. But you know, the one thing I have learned and the message I really want to leave with you is this. The one thing I have learned significantly in my life and in business is, when you have envy and strife, you have every evil at work. If you get rid of the envy and the strife, we will all be successful, we will all benefit, and we will all get along. We will all want to go to work every day. You will enjoy your positions here, you will enjoy your reputation, you know, and life will be so much happier for everyone here. And I just hope, you know, that you learn that lesson. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor. How are you doing today?
Good, thanks.
Good to see you all. I don't think this issue has anything to do about the processes of development here in town, so let's just put the cards on the table and put out what the issue is. The issue is the relationship between the city manager's office and a developer in town. I think Council Brown was very clear on that. I've got his statement, he's out of town, his mother is very ill, and one able to attend a day, and this meeting could be moved at his request, so I visited with him about this. And Council Kelly, you and I visited before you got elected last year, and you had a survey that said sixty-eight percent of registered Owasso people liked Owasso the size it was and didn't want to see any more growth. I don't know where you got that statistic, but I'm the thirty-two percent that believes that we need more development. I like to see development. I want to see good development, and I want to see good government. But here are the facts. Tuesday's situation could have been avoided because a week earlier, Council Brown sent Mr. Ray an email asking for clarification on a lawsuit filed by Owasso Land Trust against him and his family's business. Mr. Ray chose not to respond to that email, and that would have prevented Tuesday night's issue. I've spoken with Council Brown about that, and that could have prevented it. Here we have a developer, and this is the gray with a cloud over it, that has benefited from a $3 million earmark that Mr. Ray flew to Washington to assist the developer in getting moved from a bridge project in Owasso out to their development. They are the beneficiary of a $5 million sanitary sewer line that the taxpayer spent to put to their development. You can have opinions on both of those, good, bad, or whatever, but when the lawsuit came about and it gets disclosed that our city manager, who is the senior chief CEO, if you will, of our city government, was in debt $41,000 to this developer, I believe it's good government to question that relationship. Just like on the state level when Senator Harry Coats had an improper personal relationship with a young lady on the Office of Juvenile Affairs, that shut down an entire development until they can investigate that relationship.
that said 68% of registered Owasso people liked Owasso the size it was and didn't want to see any more growth. I don't know where you got that statistic, but I'm the 32% that believes that we need more development. I like to see development. I want to see good development, and I want to see good government. But here are the facts. Tuesday's situation could have been avoided because a week earlier, Councillor Brown sent Mr. Ray an email asking for clarification on a lawsuit filed by Owasso Land Trust against him and his family's business. Mr. Ray chose not to respond to that email, and that would have prevented Tuesday night's issue. I've spoken with Councillor Brown about that, and that could have prevented it. Here we have a developer, and this is the gray with the cloud over it, that has benefited from a $3 million earmark that Mr. Ray flew to Washington to assist the developer in getting moved from a bridge project in Owasso out to their development. They are the beneficiary of a $5 million sanitary sewer line that the taxpayers spent to put to their development. You can have opinions on both of those, good, bad, or whatever, but when the lawsuit came about and it gets disclosed that our city manager, who is the senior chief CEO, if you will, of our city government, was in debt $41,000 to this developer, I believe it's good government to question that relationship. Just like on the state level when Senator Harry Coats had an improper personal relationship with a young lady on the Office of Juvenile Affairs, that shut down an entire development until they can investigate that relationship. We have the same situation here. We don't know. Mr. Ray chose not to respond to Councillor Brown's email for clarification on how this $41,000 lawsuit had been settled. Also finding out that that same business doesn't just owe $20 in a filing fee. I personally spoke to the attorney at the Oklahoma Tax Commission in Oklahoma City last week. There is a paid-down agreement in place for that business, for his family's business. So the email you guys got about a $20 filing fee does not correspond with what that attorney told me. He couldn't disclose the details of it, but he did say there's an agreement in place and payments are being made for that sales tax issue. There is no forgiveness here. It's good government for you guys to question when something like this comes up. Character and lawsuits, all you have to do is look at Mr. Ray's 30 years of IRS tax liens, Oklahoma Tax Commission, and I'll ask for the same privileges David Charn, or, and Ricky Hayes, and his 30 years of lawsuits in his personal life. If you'd like to talk about that.
(applause). This could have been a good event, Mr. Lewis.
Thank you. Hello?
Hello. Contrary to the previous speakers before JV, many of us disagree with the public, you know, I don't know what this is, dog and pony show, but anyway, contrary to those speakers, Brown and Ross do not owe an apology to any of you or to the other people that are, basically this city is split now, and it shouldn't be. It's all about the taxpayers and where our dollars are well-spent. This is like an orchestrated public flogging. Truth is, citizens of Owasso do not trust our city government, city staff, due to unethical and illegal track records.
Prove it.
As a 51-year resident, I appreciate residents such as Mrs. Lavindeuski. I didn't appreciate, though, developers who were sitting on the back rows laughing at her. That is not integrity or character. First city council members, Ross and Brown, are the first ones to ask hard questions and possibly be the last ones. I don't witness anyone else asking questions at the council members, no matter how many public taxpayers speak out. It's disregarded and voted on according to how the city wants it. Owasso is in deep debt, and in the future, I don't know where my kids or grandkids will be. If they'll be here in Owasso, I see a lot of people out here that don't even live in Owasso. I know you do business here, I know you have businesses, but this has gotten really nasty, and to blame one side or the other, it's all of us. And I think we all need to remember what the city of character is about, and you are, were elected to represent all of Owassans, not just a certain development, special interests, that sort of thing. This works both ways.
Thank you. Anyone else sign to speak? I'm sorry?
(inaudible).
Oh, okay. All right, thank you. Okay, so we're done with that particular agenda item. I think what we'll do is we'll continue on with the next two agenda items and then give council opportunity to speak or to comment or have questions.